Anybody got any questions on the mic? I mean, Tommy, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Let's go to the next item then. Number two. Ms. Graham, you gonna help? You gonna talk to this person from meeting him five o'clock?
I didn't, I left my on my.
What you got?
I don't get it.
You gonna be, you gonna take care of Ms. Graham, number two, Ms. Graham.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we're gonna, um, this is what I like to do. We're gonna listen to him and see what he has to say. I might have some duty to just show up to be involved on, think anybody's coming. Can I?
Okay.
Allow us?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Well, um.
I think I will. Oh, no, I am. Um, but what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna push him out for three months. I'm gonna ask him to come back because I feel like if I just let it go, it's a lot to go back to the old behavior. So I just want to make sure he stays on his pattern. So I'm just gonna ask him to come back in three months.
Okay, good deal. All right, number three. Ms. Johnson? What you gonna do with this one?
Um, we'll bring him back as well. I'm gonna go 30 days though because they have been working with the community.
They have, they're coming together.
So we'll give them 30 days.
All right. Number four and five, that's the show calls on the market. Who called for this one?
That's gonna be me. Um, I think we should have several people to speak on it. So I'll wait until work session. I mean, council meeting.
Regular meeting, okay, good deal. All right, number six. Mr. Pruitt, you and Ms. Graham, I'm gonna have Anna talk to us, talk about this in a little bit, okay? So if y'all just, you got a resolution for that, but I think she's gonna. Anna, Anna, why don't you wait a minute till I get through? I'll be through in just a second and then we'll have you up to talk about it, okay?
You saying you're gonna do what you're on?
I'm gonna let her talk about item number six in a minute. Okay? I'm gonna better talk about the whole year. All right, number seven.
That would be me again.
That's you again.
Yes, I will be asking for a reconsideration amendment, but we'll talk about it at the regular, regular session.
Okay. And then Big Daddy's, number eight, that's okay. Yes, am I, am I, how big, but Bad Daddy's.
Bad Daddy.
Bad Daddy's, Bad Daddy's hamburger burger joint, that's gonna be, that's gonna be interesting, isn't it? It's coming to town, Bad Daddy's coming to town, okay. And then on number nine, we've got, uh, Packet Store on Carlson Boulevard. Brandon's okay with that one, yeah. All right, number 10, Family Dollar Store on Houston Boulevard. Ronde, is that you?
No, that's me.
C.C., is that you?
Who was that?
Make land, Pruitt.
Pruitt, yeah.
Pruitt, is it Pruitt? Okay.
Yeah, we'll pass him.
All right, that'll be all right. All right, then you got a change of community action committee.
Yeah, that's my appointment.
That's you got, you good. Then we got three to tear, three new, uh, usual abatement agents, okay? And we got six to tear down.
Yep.
And then 14 is the abeyments. All right. And we got several people want to talk to us, but let's start off by, we were on number six. Mr. Pruitt, you wanna get over here and we'll talk. Anna, you can go ahead, come on up and let's talk about what your, your plan is for the, I understand is, you go over here. Hannah Buckleup in the chamber. Let's talk about, I guess, you, maybe they're talking about a plan. Let's let, uh, Ms. Graham ask you the question and then you can get in all of a sudden.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Now, just go ahead and talk about it. Let me see what you got to say.
Okay, well, I, it, I'm glad that you had asked me to come today because I had talked to President Genright about wanting to come and give you an update in general. So I'll, I'll save that though and dive specifically in on this issue. But it does touch one of the big projects that we are working on that I wanted to make you aware of. And I've talked to a couple of you individually about this. We are funding through our foundation at the Chamber, a downtown plan. We've met with the mayor's office and Robert Smith with planning about this. If you look at 2040, your comprehensive plan, one of the greatest things it recommends that we do right away is a downtown plan. And for the Chamber, in terms of economic development, creating jobs, creating opportunity, seizing on the momentum of the tourism, and curating the experience for our visitor, downtown plan is critical. And it also deals with our gateways into our community. When you look at I-65 and how we come into Montgomery on Clay and Heron Street and exit and enter the city, and how we also come in on Union Street, how we approach our city, how we drive our visitors and our residents through signage downtown, that's what a downtown plan does. And I wanted to make you aware that the consultants will be in town starting August 16th. You'll be seeing some notifications wanting to meet with you, get your input. There will be two community-wide sessions for input that Robert Smith is working with us on and the city is facilitating. So the city really is leading this effort because we know downtown is a driver. When we look at other communities like the Chattanooga's, like Greenville, South Carolina, like Austin, Texas, they do downtown development. So they're intentional about where they put people, where they drive retail, and particularly with what we're doing to drive the Air Force development, to build that Redstone Arsenal gateway type economy tied to our defense sector, a downtown plan is key. And we'd like to see that downtown plan transform our I-65 corridor as well through our city because the impact to the city in terms of tax receipts, livability and quality of life for our residents will be tremendous.
Great. All right, questions?
Okay, so you did mention, uh, mention the Maxwell Boulevard, but I understand that's a part of that, so.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that, that they will come in and they'll define downtown with community input, but it will, in my mind, stretch from the gates of Maxwell, probably all the way up the hill to Crempeton Bowl and the multiplex. And then, of course, you know, from the river up to I-55, that's your rough designation of downtown. So it will include the, the overpasses and the interchange through our city, the new whitewater development, and that entire corridor down Maxwell Boulevard, which is just really ripe for, for development and redevelopment that's gonna make life better for our residents and our visitors.
So, um, and whenever you're doing something in District Four, I want to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, to have to hear about it around the way makes me think, somewhere or another, you missed me in the conversation and that makes me feel like I can't trust what you're saying or what you're doing because you're not being open. There was no reason for me not to be a part of the conversation from the beginning instead of hearing it from the back source and then it's, oh, yeah, we're doing that. So, um, just as good moving forward, if you're doing anything in District Four, all I need is a phone call or email or a text if you don't feel comfortable calling, but just some kind of something that says, we're working, okay?
Sure.
Now, that doesn't encompass though what we're doing here on West South Boulevard.
Right.
Yeah, so let's talk about that part of it. Do you have, oh, have you not seen the resolution?
Well, I did not know, I was not aware of that until I saw it on the printed council agenda. I've, um, reached out to President Genright to make sure, A, I was still supposed to be here today to talk to you about some other things and then I saw that on the agenda and mentioned, you know, I'll be there to learn more about this. I did talk to Council Pruitt today who informed me a little bit about what you are thinking. Couldn't agree with you more that the development of our corridor through our city is not what any of us wants it to be. It doesn't drive a better quality of life and it doesn't drive tax receipts. It doesn't drive people getting off the interstate into Montgomery. And so I'd like you to explain to me your intent and, and what you're asking us to do to add on to this, some sort of a planning piece here.
I thought you had a whole conversation with Glenn already, so I thought you was already aware of what we were doing.
Well, we, we talked a little bit about what the, why both of you are concerned about it and then you and I, of course, had talked about Maxwell Boulevard and downtown. What I, what I am gathering from your item on the agenda is that you're asking us to expand the downtown look to include the corridor through the city, is that correct?
Absolutely, Ms. Graham. That's not actually what we're saying though. I don't know, we might not be quite the same. Well, yeah, however, however we need to do it, Anna, Mike, have you got those pictures? What we're asking, um, we got an extra copy of this here. You can have that copy so you can see it. I want you to be aware of what it says. Anna, Mayor, what, what Audrey and I are talking about is, and we're gonna go back and I talked to Charlie this weekend. When we first, or when they first started the Biscuit Stadium, what, Charlie, 20 years ago?
Yeah, '04.
People, people thought they were crazy when we first started Biscuit Stadium. I included, didn't think it was gonna work and I was wrong. But we, the city, invested in that and once we did that, people bought in. People bought into the process of what was going on downtown with the Chamber, through private enterprise. Everybody was working together. I've got some pictures that I went over this weekend and took. And Audrey and I were talking about, and we just threw out the truck stop because that's sort of the main hub. And we were talking about three, four, five mile radius, picking that and going to work and having the city buy in. And, you know, some of these photos that you're looking at, that's the old Gaylord's behind Circle K. The thing is wide open, it's the old bus stop or the old Greyhound bus station. That's the hotel that faces the, uh, 65 that's got a total gate, total fence around it. As far as he's got, there's some other ones. There's a three-story hotel, Mayor, over there that you're probably aware of that looks like Baghdad. I mean, it looks like a bomb dropped off and there ain't a window in that facility. And so what we wanted to do, Anna, is with the Chamber's help and with the city's help, we want to clean that up. You know, there are, I think, numerous families that come to the beach each year that go through that corridor that have had the conversation with the wife or the husband and says, hey, we're not gonna stop there. We're gonna stop in Greenville, we're gonna stop in Proust. And I think if the, if the city gets on board, Mayor, and we start tearing down a bunch of this stuff and making green space, there's an opportunity for a lot, somebody to make a lot of money over there, in my opinion, with hotels. And all you gotta do is see one Marriott come, but we've got to buy in to cleaning that thing up like we did downtown. And that's where I think Audrey and I were coming from. And this is saying, which, you know, Glenn is really tiptoeing here, but this thing is saying that, um, we, we want you to, like you're developing a plan, um, for downtown. We would like to see a plan developed or at least a start of a plan. Yes. For, for that area.
Okay.
We understand it's a process, but, uh, we want the Chamber to assist us with this process.
Couldn't be happier to help with that and see your leadership on this front. And in fact, the timing is so good for you guys to be looking at how to prioritize major projects in your area. If, if you go back to your 2040 plan and Robert and I have talked about this, neighborhood redevelopment and priority zones, identifying priority areas in your community is key. And so that's one of the next things that 2040 says, hey, that's gotta happen if Montgomery's ever gonna get better.
Right.
Uh, so we would love to work with you on that, come back to you with a recommendation on how we kind of take this downtown venture to the next step. And actually, what I have seen in some other communities, they take a stretch. If they've, if you've got two interchanges, three interchanges coming right through your community and you're dealing with this and you really drill in and, and get a plan on how to deal with it. And it's, it's infrastructure, the timing is great to be looking at infrastructure prioritization because of what's happening with the federal government right now and because the city and the county are working together on making sure you use those dollars wisely on big projects that will move the needle. This is exactly the kind of thing we need to be prepared for. So I welcome the opportunity to do some research on this, find out the best way to come back to you and brief you on how we can move forward in partnership with the city.
Let me, let me throw out something while I'm talking to y'all. Because, uh, about four years ago, we contracted with a company called Buckstrom out of Dallas. And we spent three, the mayor, myself and District Five spent $50,000 to get a plan. Robert's aware of it, Chip Peels, I think Chip has a copy of it. It needs to be, you need to use that data.
I need to see that, I'd like to see that.
There's a lot of good data in there. It tells you a lot of things about what went on and it's, it's the I-65 corridor. It's, it takes into Southern Bypass and I-65 in that area. So, uh, you need to, that's some good data that we don't want to waste that money that we spent. And they would like to, they definitely like to, uh, have to spend some more money with them, but we don't, we may not need to, but we need to use their data to get to stage one there because they got a lot of good stuff. Okay, retail, all kind of businesses they talked about, so, and they give.
I didn't see that data either, so, and I was here, so I like to see it too.
Yeah, it's, it's something District Five did and District, and then Robert had it, yeah.
I remember Glenn was very passionate about that.
Yeah.
I'll make sure to get a copy of that and review that with our.
I think Chip's got it, or Robert's got it, I don't know which one's got it now.
Okay.
And Anna, you, you may want to get a copy of this too, just so you can have that, to know what that says so that it's not something that you didn't see or you kind of agreed to and you haven't seen it.
The, the resolution itself, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And, Anna.
More pictures.
Yeah.
Anna, I got a question for you. I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Way back, the planning department, Chad Emerson was here and they did shirets. Charles, you remember those, those? They did downtown planning, we did Atlanta Highway, we did all that Madison Avenue. What happened, all that information?
Robert's got it.
Robert, you got it?
We did Fairview, that was the one that really.
Yeah, they, they did Fairview.
There, there is a lot of work that has been done on vision. And Robert can speak to this far better than I can, but there's been a lot of vision work and especially the consultants that are gonna do this downtown work, they like the work that the city's done in terms of a vision. This work is not about, um, pretty pictures and watercolors, it's about an action plan. It's a business plan for your community. What infrastructure do you need? How do you drive the traffic? What kind of signage do you have to have? What kind of experience are you, are you establishing? So, the, what, what the city has though, Councilman Grimes, is, is, is gonna be important for us to roll into all of this.
That sounds good.
Charlie, I have, I have one more.
Yeah.
We did, we did several years ago, Mayor, um, Charlie, help me, there was $200,000 or $300,000 that we put in account for demolition and we went and tore.
We've had that, the tearing down just existing residential housing.
Yeah, we went and tore down and Chris may be able to help me with it. There was three or 400 homes that we tore down across the city for blight. Would this be a good time to look at using some money in demolition and starting to tear some of this stuff down over on West South Boulevard? I think it would be a prime opportunity to get rid of some of that.
It probably, it probably, that new rescue money coming, probably some money in there for that.
Yeah, blight removal is already, uh.
Well, I think that's, see, he's making a comment to me right now. This property belongs to people. You can't just go in and tear their property down, you gotta condemn it. So then you gotta go in and, and take this, the city has to make the condemnation based on some theory and you just can't take folks' property away from them. I mean, good example, I passed by something yesterday afternoon, the old governor's house. How many, how long we talked about that?
Yes.
I mean, I did, and, and the plant is, you can hardly see it now, it's covered up in vines. And, but we talked about it, not as long as I've been here, but doggone, almost close to that. I'd say we've talked about 20 minutes, 20 years on that thing and it hadn't come down yet.
And I think one of the things is that we got to hold them accountable is the city. We may go out there, we may contact and then we, you know, we just kind of put our hands up on it and they just fall back off the wagon again and then before you know it, another 10 years gone by, we, you know.
It does.
We give them a, you know, we send them a letter and tell them, hey, you got to clean it up, you got to do whatever with it. If they don't do it, we got to stay on it. We can't just let it fall by the wayside, so. And Charlie, there's, there's not a doubt in my mind that some of these things are not sound structurally that, that I saw and took pictures of.
Well, you know, go back, go back to something that's happening right now on Court Street. The, uh, Court, uh, the, uh, Court, what is it?
Grove Court.
Grove, Grove Apartments. Those apartments were built architecturally, very amazing architectural work back, back in the 40s and 50s. And now they've got concrete ceilings in them at eight feet. You can't put air conditioning, who, I don't know who, I mean, I know who's got the money behind it. I wouldn't put my money behind it, I'd be blowing that thing up because I can't see it ever being a real usable piece of property. But somebody sees something I don't, I'm okay.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm so excited to see your leadership and I think this all kind of comes back to, it's such a big issue. How do you prioritize and focus? And if we'll focus on that I-65 corridor and we'll focus on why we're doing this, tourism, the economic impact, the driver that tourism is, is tremendous. But everything you do for tourism makes life better for your residents. So between green spaces and, and the planning that will be done, you, you will, you will tackle a lot of your priorities through this one focused corridor. So I commend you for being focused on it and look forward to bringing you back something of how we can pull that together and work with the city to get that done.
Thank you, Anna, appreciate your input. We look forward to talking to you more.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And Mr. President, I know this is not the time, but I do have Ashley Jornigan with me if there is time just to talk about some of the upcoming events in the city.
That'd be great, Ashley, if you, I've, we got a minute.
You want to do that now, sir?
We got two minutes, Ashley. I know you can talk to Ashley.
We're gonna really test how fast I can talk. So I really just wanted to, as you know, I'm Ashley Jornigan, Executive Director for Destination MGM with the Chamber, but I really wanted to just make sure we were on the same page and what's going on the week of Labor Day, the weekend before. Going all the way through Labor Day weekend. So the weekend before, you know, is AFITC. It's one of the largest, or it's the largest IT conference and it's hosted here. So now they are getting everybody back. They had to go virtual last year, but we are happy that they are going to be back here this year. They're expecting 3,000 to 4,000 people and we are hoping that we're able to accommodate and we are accommodating them. And so currently, we are going through many things to make sure that they get all the things that they need to have a good experience when they're here, whether that's from, um, whether that's from food or if that's transportation. We're working through all those pieces, but we'll have that many people Sunday, Monday and Tuesday and their last day is Wednesday afternoon. Uh, and then immediately following that is the Montgomery kickoff. So that is the first game of the college football season, that's that night at Crempeton Bowl, UAB versus Jacksonville State. Uh, so we're hoping to get a lot of people there for that as well. Uh, following that, we have our HBCU Classic Weekend and that's the first time that we've seen in history that we have two HBCU Classics happening the same weekend in the same city and it's right here. So we're very excited to be able to talk about that. Uh, as you know, we have the Labor Day Classic, which is Alabama State University versus Miles. On Saturday and on Sunday, we have the Red Tails Classic, which is Tuskegee versus Fort Valley State. And so we have a series of events that we have happening from Friday to Sunday, really to Monday. And we've partnered with Alabama State to make sure that we're able to promote everything going on, which is why we have honed, called it the HBCU Classic Weekend. And this is only the first, but the hope is that we are able to build this up to rival classics around the country. And that is our goal and to make sure that we have the same exact level of excitement and enthusiasm to come to Montgomery that we have in any other type of classic that you can. And so we are excited, this is year one, so we are working towards it, but the hope is that next year it'll be much larger.
Let me add one more thing to that. The oldest convention in this town, in my opinion, is a horse show at Coliseum, been there for 20 some odd years. There'd be 2,000 people, over 2,000 people here that same period of time. Late, late August during Labor Day to show 1,600 horses. Uh, so there'll be a lot of folks in town for that too. And so just add that to the crowd, we're gonna have a big crowd here.
And what we hope to do is we'll make sure that you all have the information just in a simple form, some sheet so you could see everything going on because we really want to make sure that the businesses are ready too. Businesses in your district, we want to be able to highlight everyone in the walking distance. But even with Uber, anywhere that, how you just get to them, we want to be able to figure out that way and make sure that people have options to eat, to play, to dine, to stay. So we're excited, we'll make sure you have all that information.
Okay, what's up?
Hey, Ashley, Anna, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm happy and excited about all these events that we're talking about we're gonna have here in Montgomery. But over the past few months since the pandemic, if you come downtown, we're ghost town. I'm, I'm afraid right now at this point, from what I've seen over the last two to three weeks, that we're not ready when it comes to hospitality and the restaurants being closed. And it's the workforce. What are our plans to try to get our restaurants up, up aboard to understand what is about to happen? Are we trying to recruit or we trying to partner with some of these two-year colleges in these hospitality realm to try to get people to be able to serve this 10,000 to 15,000 impact that we're gonna have here in Montgomery?
I'm actually been reaching out to all the hotels and the restaurants as we speak. So I've been going to the owners and to the managers to ask them, what is, what exactly is it? Because there's two different needs. There's the service side, but there's also the culinary side. So it's not just finding servers. So we're trying to figure out what is the exact need that you have. And then I've even had some that said, hey, our, our staff is, are blown out, it's getting too crazy right now and they need a chance to breathe, right? So I'm literally going through that, we just had an industry partner meeting, we've had two so far. Uh, and that where we're literally sending information out consistently because the last thing we need is for them to say, wait, I didn't even know this was happening, right? And so we've already had a couple of restaurants who have agreed to stay open till midnight. They've agreed to possibly even open on Sunday, Monday and Tuesday. And so that, just the idea that it's now in their minds, where before they were closed until Wednesday or really the weekend, to say, hey, I actually think I may open and may be worth it. So we are in process and we keep talking to them. I will say that I know how restaurants, being in the industry for so long, they are looking at probably two or three weeks out because they have so much going on. So I think we just have to keep hammering it and keep talking to them and keep getting in their face. And that is pretty much my entire team's goal is to make sure that they know. Because we want, we don't want to create an answer to something that they're saying isn't the problem. So I'm trying to get that information from them and we've been working with them and getting them to know what's available. The next option we've had is that we've reached out to several food trucks and we've actually even talked about creating and we've, uh, I've met with them already of creating an experience where people at night, after nine o'clock, after eight o'clock, when everything is closing down, the city, we will activate a space for them that's filled with food trucks, with music, with tables, with chairs, that's outside. We've talked about the train shed because it's so large, they can still space out. And trained, and we've already had four food trucks who are like, we'll be there every single day. And so we're trying to just focus heavily on what can we do, right? And how can we work it? And so that is one area that we've talked about that they're already ready to answer that call. And so that we will actually host that and be able to make sure that if someone's out and they want to have a good time and the game just let out, is there somewhere for them to go and it's downtown? The answer is yes. So we will make sure that we at minimum cover that piece to ensure that that doesn't stop their ability to have a good time while they're here.
Okay.
Good deal, thank you.
My last question, Charlie.
Okay, and my other concern, and that's great. Now, when we look at a lot of these people gonna come in, gonna be living or staying at the Renaissance Hotel. Through my experience, the Renaissance Hotel is not opening up until Thursday. And just the past Fourth of July weekend, it was not even open on a Friday evening with all the activities that we have. Uh, we're talking with them about the impact that, you know, having the outside open and, and their entertainment.
I just had a meeting with the GM, the sales director and their salesperson about that entire week on Wednesday. We had lunch, I went over everything, explained to them the need, what we needed to be. We talked about them being open, we talked about other options. So yes, we have actually met with them, I've met with all the other hoteliers as well. A couple of them said they might even just open up their ability. Typically, like, you know, Doubletree is not typically open. Doubletree said, hey, if you're saying that you're gonna do some promotion to say, to get people to us, we'll open up on those days too. So yes, those conversations have been happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Conway, Chris, you were gonna talk to us about, uh, I got you on my agenda here. Chris and Dan, Dicky, Bill Easterling. Yeah, y'all, they were gonna, y'all were asking to come to council meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And Ronde.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure who, who invited, but Bill Easterling, who's the manager of Repower South, he's here.
Ronde invited him and Audrey.
Yeah, Mr. Dicky, I was, he.
But Chris is here.
No, he's not here right now. He'll be here.
Have we not got any, all right, they're here.
So can you tell us about the operation of, of Repower and how, how it works for the city, for the city trucks going out there to every day or how often they go out there and how does it work?
Yes, okay. My name is Bill Easterling, I'm the manager over at Repower South. And, um, so we, we take in all of the city's material, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, a couple of commercial trucks on Wednesdays. But, uh, they, they come in and dump out and run across our very sophisticated sort line we have that is partially manually and then a lot of automated sortings done through optical sorters and screens and, uh, different types of equipment like that. I know, I, I think some of you have been there. Um, I would like to take this opportunity, if you haven't, if you, if you would want to come and tour the facility and I could, could show you exactly what happens and, uh, the whole process. But, um, uh, we, uh, we are seeing commodity prices increase for the recyclables, recyclables recover. It's been a very down two, three, four years in that, in that category. So we are seeing it bounce back, which is, uh, which is great because it costs, it costs a lot of money to run that plant and, uh, obviously that's good to see. But I would, uh, I would like for those of you who haven't come to come by and you, you, all I need's just a phone call and you, you can come over, give you the tour A to Z and let you see exactly what happens.
So do all trucks go? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Ronde, go ahead, go ahead.
How many employees do you have on that?
Right now, we have about 39.
39 and are you open every day? Whether it's equipment down or whatever?
Oh, that varies. We are starting to see some of the original conveyors that were there, was there when IREP was operating the facility. We are starting to see some of those conveyors just, you know, they sat there a long time, and you had a lot of dry rotting. A lot of conveyors were replaced when we came in, some weren't. So we are going through some of those original conveyors replacing. And normally, a downtime event like that is one to two days. We have good suppliers that are not far away, and obviously, minimizing the downtime is a priority.
And my last question, and I'm going to let you take it back over, Ronde, is you said one to two days, maybe some downtime. You've got 39 employees. And then I know you came down maybe about a year ago, I think, or so, and we talked about how we could adjust some funding for you because it was, you know, just a rough time. Are you doing better financially?
Yes, actually, June was a very good, very good month compared July. I do not have the results yet, but I knew, I do know it's going to be better than June. So we are, we are seeing some improvement there. Obviously, our goal is to be standalone.
Okay.
Good to hear. Good to hear.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Anybody got any more questions?
One last question. So are you able to accept all the city, so is at no time you have to turn those trucks around and send them to the landfill?
No, there has been times that we have to do that. We don't want to get in a situation where the tip floor is full coming out the building and garbage outside.
And it's just one last thing from me. Do you have any business cards? So we'll have your contact information in order to do that tour.
I sure do. Where would you like me to leave them?
You can just bring them right here, and I'll pass them down. Thank you.
And since you're going to be here just a few more minutes.
Let me address something. Ronde asked about when it is turned around to us. So our agreement with them is that they process everything that we take. So when they do send it back to us, that goes against their maximum that they can bring to the landfill. So they're set at a certain amount that they can even bring to the landfill as far as processed material. So it's in their best interest not to be shut down for any great length of time and all that. So that's all tracked. And like I say, they run across the scale at their place, and they bring it to our place, and we weigh it, and we make sure all of those things are tracked and kept up with. But when they do have a shutdown, that kind of goes against their total that they're allowed to bring.
And I just want to make sure you do understand that we may be, we may be out there, the city of Montgomery, really close on that piece of property. That's kind of why we're talking, you do understand that, that that's kind of why we're having this conversation?
I didn't hear any details. I just heard something's going on with the property beside me, I guess, to the west side.
Yeah, we're possibly talking about making a city lot on that extra property out there. So we just kind of wanted to make sure we'll be able to marry up those two businesses out there with no problem, you know, what we're doing and what you're doing, no problem. So we just had a few questions, pretty much. Was that about all we had, Mr. Mitchell, you think?
Just one last question. What can the city do to make your job more effective? Do we need to separate our, do we need to separate?
I sure would appreciate it if you could do it. We have a very high amount of textiles in the city's garbage, clothing, blankets, comforters. And it causes a lot of problems in my system with jamming screens, anything long and stringy like that. We have a tremendous amount of textiles, which I feel like maybe if it was pushed, those clothing, clothing and blankets and stuff could be dropped off somewhere where they could be reused. But that is the largest challenge, is dealing with all the textiles.
And I'll address that, too, Ronde. When you're talking about separating out, we don't need to separate out the actual recyclables from the household garbage, but like he's talking about textiles, things like your yard trash, that doesn't go in the green can. And those are things that hamper their operation because they're not set up to process that material. They're set up to process basic household waste. So textiles, again, a big one.
Garden hoses, extension cords.
Chris, I think you bring up a good point. I think probably we need to do a reeducation of our Montgomery people on what we need to go in the green can and not, because we get away from knowing what to go in that, and we need to educate our people more. So maybe, I don't know, we're doing, what kind of education program we're doing with our sanitation as far as information to the public? But probably need to do something more because I think, I don't know, you still getting dogs?
Don't see too many dogs anymore.
Okay, I know you did. Tires?
No, there was a big problem for a while.
Yeah, okay. But I think we need some kind of, I think I talked to Danny one day about some kind of education program. That we need to do that.
Maybe even neighborhood services. I know before Amanda left, that was something, she was, you know, about garbage cans, different stuff like that, pushing information out because you have a list of communities, and you can kind of give them the president, put them in their newsletters and stuff like that. Maybe we can even partner a little bit with that.
The Clean City Committee has a fund to do some kind of indication on the can.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the Clean City Commission that we defunded last year?
Yeah, they still got money. They still got money.
Yeah, but we ain't funding them.
Yeah, but my point is, they've got a plan, and they got, so Danny could pick up on that, whatever.
Thank you, sir.
I do, just while I'm here, I do have one thing to add. The green cans that you guys have over at our facility for the public to drop off their recycling, that's going better than I expected. We are dumping those two cans about four times a week each. And you do have the people that are doing what they shouldn't, you know, they'll drop off trash or pallets, and we'll deal with that. But that is going well, and like I say, each can's getting dumped about four times a week.
Thank you. Hey, Chris, I got one question left. Is there a way that we can start implementing, if we don't already, the blue trash bins for recycling? And I've been in places where we've even had the gray bins, where we can put, if we're doing yard work and those things, separate from the actual household trash.
Yeah, so if you take 65,000 customers times the cost of a bin, that's about a three and a half million dollar investment to provide the can. But the process that they use is, it's a mixed waste processing facility, so there's no need for the blue can. Because the blue can would be, oh, we're only going to put aluminum, plastic, cardboard in the blue can. And so that's, that's a, you know, a single stream facility where they're not processing mixed waste. They're processing the mixed waste, so they're able to handle the household. So the education component becomes a lot less. It really boils down to things you should never, it has nothing to do with the repile program, it's things you should never have been putting in the green can to begin with. Yard trimmings, dogs, the kitchen sink, literally, things like that. I mean, they've seen those things come through out of the back of the garbage can that residents have put in the green can, so.
So, Chris, what are we supposed to do with the yard trimming? I've been putting mine.
Say again?
What are we supposed to do with the yard trimming?
Hey, Chris, you bag them and put them on your trash.
Well, that's your, that's your, we call the trash pickup, so that's your.
So it's just supposed to be like on the side, separate from the trash can?
That's a, containerized if possible, you know, bag, box, whatever, but not in the green can.
Okay.
Chris, I had a question for you. Could we put a sticker on the can, only these items? You know, I realize there's 65,000 cans, but somehow, put a sticker and reeducate everybody when they go out to the can, they see what belongs there?
We can even do a mailer instead of just, you know?
Just something.
There are a lot of possibilities, but they.
I know some neighbors' HOAs would go stick those on the cans for them, but some would not, so.
Give me back here.
One of my partners called.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Waxell.
Good evening to everyone. As most of you know, I'm the chairman of All Collaborative and Served Community Development Corporation. We are a non-profit community development corporation. One of the things that we take pride in, that we not only develop housing, but we try to develop young minds.[1612.21]